Ladies and gentlemen, I call this Board of Supervisors meeting to order in beautiful King William County. Olivia?
Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here. Would you please rise with me for a moment in silence for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone reviewed the meeting agenda? Any corrections or additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt the amended agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
The only change will be there will be when we speak the change I know of, Lori Knowles on eight beat. Who's that for you? I have a motion in a second, Olivia?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye. All right, our next item is public comment period speakers have an opportunity to come forward and speak for three minutes as an individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. Anyone that would like to come forward is coming forward now. I don't know of any great topics, but you got your time.
I'm Charles Pearsall, I'm in the 2nd District. I see we have highway people here again tonight, and I want to go back complaining again. The size of roads on 30, it washed out and nothing being done. It's been, I think, that I first started complaining, and I think it was March, and we're getting ready to have school in a couple, at least a month. We got back roads like 6:35. The school bus needs a car, the school bus is in the tree. This ain't acceptable for buses and, you know, the safety of our kids. I mean, they'd rather go down there at Cypress Swamp and cut Lily Pass instead of trimming the roads. And, I mean, we've been complaining, I know you all have as a board, and these washouts are that deep down my way. You go outside the road, where the bus going? Where the people's cars going? Through the woods. Through the bicycle. We didn't even complain, and I'll say that has done nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, my name is Vicki Beach, I live at 1613 Globe Road, I'm in the 5th District, and I'm coming to talk to you all tonight about the roads that need widening. I'd like to see some of the board talk with BDOT about getting some of these roads on the six-year plan to not only get some widening, but have the markers put on some of these, even the smaller roads that, you know, like Globe Road, I think that would help with the safety. I would like to see the six-year plan, you know, to include all these. I also want to talk to you a little bit about the conditions of the roads right now. I travel Globe Road, of course, and Calno Road, which is Route 601, Nelson's Bridge Road, 615 daily, and as I was traveling this week, I noticed that the edges of the roads, some of them, you know, like, there's brush. If I had to go off the side of the road to miss someone who was on my side of the lane, I would end up possibly hitting a tree, I could fall in a ditch, I don't know, because I can't tell, the brush is so bad along the edges of the road. I will tell you that my father, who lives with me, was driving down Globe Road, and I promise you, he's 82 years old and will not be speeding down Globe Road, and he met a deputy, actually, and the deputy was, he had to go off of the road onto the shoulder when he hit a pothole, which actually caused $2,000 worth of damage to his truck. So, and he didn't realize that until, you know, a few months later, when he had someone take a look at repairs. So, like I said, I would like to just see some of these roads, you know, if y'all could just start putting them and having the repairs and getting it on the six-year plan. I was really disappointed when I talked to BDOT to find out that Sharon Road and, there was one other road that they said was out there that BDOT was looking at or getting or had a project for, but, you know, there's so many roads in this area that need repairing, and I just hope that you all will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dylan Davenport, I live on Upshaw Road, I think I'm 5th District, and one of the things that I've noticed is that Upshaw Road is already prohibited for tractor-trailer traffic. However, because the road comes from Route 30 and connects to 600 near 360, the placement of the sign, by the time they get on, they realize that the street is prohibited, they're already on it, and there's no way for them to turn around or do anything else except proceed through the road. So perhaps as an inexpensive measure has been done in other communities, they signed for the truck drivers that says, "Ignore GPS. Road not appropriate for tractor-trailer usage." Once they're on it, there really isn't, there's not room for them to share. I am not the only dog walker out on that road, I just happen to see them in the mornings, and the truck driver looks as confused as I am when I see them going by, it's a Target truck, or some other major corporation that has no local stops on the road, not the law courts that may have business there. So just perhaps there is an inexpensive measure that can be done to increase safety and keep off the inappropriate traffic.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone coming forward, and I will close the public comment period. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give approval of the revised consent agenda.
Second. Olivia?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
The next item is 8A, recognition of Mandy Tranum, and Mission Director of King William County Social Services. I think Mr. Harlock is going to read that.
Yes, sir.
Come forward.
I think we have a couple other board members from Social Services, can you all want to come forward also in recognition for Mandy?
Thank you so much for your service. You brought me good out of my...
All right, so I'm going to be reading Resolution 1935, Resolution of Appreciation for Mandy. Just realized, we... The name is spelled two different ways. The name is spelled two different ways.
We'll just read it one more time.
Yeah, I understand, it's really, as I'm comparing them.
No one would have ever stated that.
Usually I catch that up front. Appreciation of Mandy Tranum. Whereas Mandy Tranum was appointed to serve on the King William County Board of Social Services in July 2015, and has been an active member of the board for four years, and whereas Mrs. Tranum has served as Chair and Vice Chair of the King William Board of Social Services, and where Mrs. Tranum has been a faithful advocate for meeting the needs of those in her community, and has sought solutions for those who are underserved without wanting recognition, and whereas Ms. Tranum has been diligent in her commitment to the staff and administration of the King William County Department of Social Services, and now therefore be it resolved that the King William County Board of Social Services expresses its appreciation to Mandy Tranum for her valuable contributions to the well-being of the citizens of King William County, and the administration, and the staff of King William County Department of Social Services, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing a sense of the King William Board of Supervisors on this matter shall be conveyed to Mrs. Tranum, and shall be spread upon the meeting minutes of said Board of Supervisors.
Thank you for your service.
Glory Knowles, except you will be Devin.
Well, good evening to the board and county administrator. My name is Kevin Miller, and I'm the President of the Rapid Emergency Medical Services Council, and we oversee the Heart Safe Community Designation Program. And through the combined efforts of King William Fire and Rescue, and the Sheriff's Office, and the Communications Center, we're here to congratulate King William County on being awarded the Heart Safe Community Designation. And just to give you an idea of what that means, you're only the seventh jurisdiction in the Commonwealth of Virginia to achieve this. So you'll be joining Stafford County, Spotsylvania County, the city of Perkinsburg, Powhatan County, King George County, and the greater Williamsburg community. So that's pretty significant. And what the Heart Safe Program is, it's a designation that shows you've met critical criteria of the program that is designed to provide survival for sudden out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. The program focuses on the American Heart Association chain of survival, and just to give you an idea of what your public safety team has had to do to get to this point, they've had to offer a lot of community CPR training, and teach people not only how to do CPR, but how to use the automatic external defibrillator, or AED as we call it. Another thing that you're being permitted for is to work with the Sheriff's Office, and have their deputies trained in CPR, and access to the AEDs, and then the Fire and Rescue Team has done a phenomenal job getting out in the community and making sure that AEDs are available in the school system, in the public buildings, in churches, and even in some of the buildings. So because of all those efforts, the people in this community now have a much better chance of survival when they have sudden cardiac arrest. So we'd like to congratulate you on that award, and tonight we have the official certificate to present to you, designating you as a heart-safe community, and we're going to present you with two road signs, you of course can get more if you'd like, that can be placed up at the entrance to the county, as you come from other jurisdictions, letting everybody know that you're now a designated heart-safe community. So that lets your residents, and your visitors, and your businesses all know how much you care for the well-being. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Speak.
Board, thank you for this opportunity. As Kevin Miller said, it's been a long road coming, it's been about six-month process, and we've gone through with the Ruetses Club doing the AED for the churches, it's helped us a long way, so I want to say thank you to them as well.
You want to call it works today?
Yes, I'll take the red flags away from the department, but Devin is here tonight accepting because he has coordinated and put in the majority of the work to make this happen. So I hope it's important that he be here tonight.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Devin, because I've had you guarding that.
And still here so far.
All right, the next item is 8C, Presentation of Research on Food Insecurity in King William County. Sharon Burke, Resource Development Coordinator of VISTA with Quinn Rivers Community Agency.
Hello, thanks for that introduction. Actually have some documents here to share with you, which will hopefully make it easier to follow along, give us either paper puts together, they can do this. So as we're giving those deals, I'd like to reintroduce myself, my name is Sharon Burke, like I said, I'm the Resource Development Vista over at Quinn Rivers Community Action Agency. I'm getting towards the end of my year of service, but a big part of my service project was to do some research on food insecurity in our service area, which happens to include King William County. We actually focus on five specific counties, which are right around our office in New Kent. And, so, documents you have in front of you, just so you can follow along, the first one is just kind of the highlights that I will be addressing today, and then the second document behind that is a flyer for the King William County Feeding Program, which I'll give a brief update about, and behind that is the full report that I compiled, like my research, about 19 pages. I'll let you go through that at a separate time, probably not right now. So before I get too far, I want to go ahead and give you that update about the King William County Feeding Program. One other big part of my VISTA project was running that program, overseeing volunteers, and rected during our summer distribution right now. About three years running with the program, and we are currently serving 164 children in the county, from 68 different families. We run all the way from June 15th through August 24th, we're distributing every Saturday from the very few programs that I know of, and all of our service area that actually delivers meals directly to children at their home. We have options for families to pick up as well, but we deliver to at least two-thirds of our families in our program. So far this summer, we've distributed approximately 2,000 meal bags out of the 3,600 that we'll distribute to the whole summer, and we've been able to do that thanks to 30 volunteers that have been dedicated, they've given about 231 hours of service and driven almost 1,300 miles this summer so far, and counting. So with that, I'll go ahead and share more about the research that I did, and focus on specific things in King William County. The first one that I want to bring my, bring your attention to is about poverty. For the most part, you are either at or below average of the state for poverty, but I point out that 16% of households in King William County are single-parent households, which will play into something I'll address in a second, which is related to food insecurity. Single-parent households, a higher risk for food insecurity, and that number reflects pretty closely to the number of children in the county, which is about 16% of children that are food secure in the county. You can compare that to the 10% of all individuals that are food secure, so you can kind of tell that children are disproportionately impacted by food security in King William County. In fact, 37.6% of food insecure individuals are children, compared to about 23.6% of the total county residents, so there's about a 14 percentage difference between their share of the county and their share of food insecure individuals, so the difference there. And another thing I'll point out is that 29% of children are eligible for free reduced lunch in school. In terms of health outcomes, one thing I found in my research is that of the five counties that we looked at, King William County has the highest risk of cardiovascular disease, so it's a good thing that you are qualified now to take care of those individuals. But, one thing that you may not know is that food insecurity is actually an indirect risk factor for cardiovascular disease through obesity, so food insecurity increases your risk for being obese, which increases your risk for cardiovascular disease. In terms of resources that are actually available in the county to address the disease challenges of food security, one thing that I found is that with that percentage of children that are eligible, only about 50% are utilizing the breakfast program, and 70, what is it, 70% that are utilizing the lunch program, so among those children that are actually eligible, not all of them are taking advantage of the program, and I'll share some reasons for that in just a second. Other thing I'd like to draw your attention to is that there are currently no summer food service program sites, which is a USDA program which provides meals to students during the summer months, and it is largely provided through the USDA, which offsets most of the costs, but there are some barriers to that program, as you can imagine, with a lot of federal programs which have some administrative burdens. In terms of local resources, and by that I mean food pantries, there are five in the county, two of those are mobile pantries, so they change locations, and all of them are in the Feed More Agency Network. Feed More is the food bank that serves this area, as well as a few surrounding counties, and they operate those mobile pantries, and then provide resources to some of the food panries in the county. And in terms of health resources, King William County is identified as a geographic health professional shortage area, which basically just means that there are a shortage of healthcare providers, and I have some recommendations I'll share with you in a second. Last thing I'll share with you from my research is some stakeholder input that I got from community members in King William County. The biggest thing that I pointed out is that the resources that they identified were pretty much unanimous, they all brought these up every single time I talked to someone, it was Medicaid, SNAP, and WAKE, as far as federal programs go, and local programs, Cornerstone Food Pantry, and the West Point Local Food Pantry are utilized both by residents of King William County and almost all of the surrounding counties. And also Resource Councils were a huge resource as far as sharing information about those programs. With all that information I gave, the conclusions I drew from all of my research is that child food insecurity is clearly a big priority in King William County, it's something that should be focused on. Moving forward, successful interventions to address that problem will have to address some of the barriers that I didn't point out, but include identifying children that are in need, you know, is a common issue, even though there are children that are identified for eligibility for free reduced meals. Hard to find those students that actually need those resources. Part of that is because of stigma, a lot of kids will not express that they need those things, especially high school students, something that came up a lot in my research, is that high school students either will not express the need for those services, or once they are identified, will refuse to use them because of stigma from their peers. And the last thing was transportation, because of the size of the county, that's actually one of the biggest barriers for summer programs, is when they're not in school, kids have a hard time getting access to resources because, you know, transportation, to get them to sites, which is one big barrier for summer food service programs. The last thing I'll mention is that some resources that are available as far as addressing the health professional shortage area, one of them is called the National Health Service Corps site. Basically, they work with health departments or other similar resources to incentivize health professionals to come to areas that are designated as health professional shortage areas, by basically giving them some money off of their student debt, which as you can imagine, is pretty high for doctors. Last thing I will say is that with the high rate of cardiovascular disease, I was not able to get a good idea of why that was, so it might be worthwhile to invest some time and resources into looking into what exactly the relationship is there that's causing such a high rate of cardiovascular disease, and specifically mortality from that moving forward. And that's all the information I want to share with you today, but I encourage you to ask me any questions, and if you have questions later on, I have included my contact information on there at the end, and I will make sure to respond. Thank you.
Did you say West Point is included in this?
Yes, yes.
Is the foreign packs part of this, or do you know about the foreign packs?
Repeat that, sorry.
Foreign packs?
No, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. So this same kind of distribution, but as, I just gave them names, so.
Okay.
As far as the transportation off-season, you know, has Quinn Rivers looked at reaching out to, obviously public transit is limited, but we do have Bay Transit, and what they might be able to offer if they could get some type of program together and identify the ones that are in need?
Not yet, no. I know that that was identified as a common resource, it came up during my research, that a lot of people had mentioned that. Besides the King William County Feeding Program, Quinn Rivers is relatively new in addressing food insecurity, which is why we did this research, is to get an idea of how we can start moving forward. It's included in my full report that I gave you, the recommendations that I made to Quinn Rivers to move forward based on some of the things that I've found, so that's going to get incorporated into a one, three, and five-year plan for them to address those, and currently going through our Strategic Planning Committee, so to make decisions about that, so I'm sure it will get included in that. Thank you.
Good, Sharon, two quick questions.
Yes.
The federal poverty level that information source comes from, the census?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. And also, in doing the research, did you go into the schools and interview students? How do we assimilate to get that data together?
Yes, so the, it's laid out in the report, so you can follow up more in there, but the bigger numbers that I outlined are from some of the bigger resources, so there's a resource called Kids Count Data Center, basically pulls in resources from Departments of Education as the numbers that they report, and so the actual physical numbers that are included in my research are from those, so things that are reported from the Department of Education. As far as some of the more qualitative findings, the things that were reported that aren't an actual number, those came from the school administration and some of the staff that are in charge of the actual nutrition programs at each school, I interviewed one from every single county in our area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Senator, before you read the report again. The next item is 8D, Virginia Department of Transportation, Ron Peeks, Virginia Department of Transportation Assistant, Administrator, and David Field, Land Use Engineer. And we just heard all... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board, honorable board members, staff, and the public. I'm here tonight, I'm Ron, Ron Peeks, and yes, I am a force substitute for Ms. McGowan, who has been called to special task out in the western part of the state, and is expected to be there for probably four to six weeks, assisting the department out in the hill country. During that period of time, we are lucky to have Mr. David Field, who is PE, he's out of our Princeburg District, he's a land use engineer, and will be with us then and salute us for the duration of Ms. McGowan's absence. And I'd like to introduce him, and just see if he has maybe a word or two to say. We're lucky to have him, we're glad, I need to...
I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Ron's going to go through the report, we did hear the assistant comments, and I've made note of those, and we'll follow up on those this week. Ron is going to be heading out on leave for a couple weeks, so I'll be your only point of contact here after this week, for the next two weeks, but looking forward to working with you, and working through whatever issues may arise while I'm here.
With that said, I think I'll go ahead and start with the written report, and you all do have the written report, but I intend just to do the highlights. And I think one of my first comments is, and it's the comment I make at all board meetings, that, you know, when folks have specific road problems, whether it's a pothole, or even a dead deer, and we get plenty of those kinds of things, I would invite you and the public to simply dial 1-800-FOR-R-O-A-D, and that will generate, they will speak with someone in our customer service center, and that will generate an electronic work order with the specifics of what the issue is, with hopefully some contact information, so when those work orders are electronically without fault... fault, unlike maybe a piece of paper on somebody's desk. Once they get into the system, they do go directly to the headquarters of the county where they're generating, and then we can electronically track them and make sure they're being addressed. Additionally, it will go straight to the area headquarters to work with your maintenance plan. So really, I can't say too much about that. Again, 1-800-F-O-R-R-O-A-D, 1-800-FOR-R-O-D. I think since the last time Joyce was here, we've made some significant progress in a lot of things. Some of our asphalt paving, our plant mix schedules have been underway. Route 600, as well as Route 618, have been completed in our plant mix schedule, and I've heard compliments on the finished product on those, so we're tickled with that. That is, of course, done by contract. Route 632 at Quentin Creek, we were able to complete that replacement, and of course that's been open, I think, since about the first of July. Mention was made, the secondary six-year plan, and as the board recalls, Ms. McGowan, I think I actually did run with y'all several years ago in her absence, the secondary six-year plan hearing. Joyce did it this year, and of course, you know, as a reminder, the board prioritized the seven roads you see on the list to be included in the secondary six-year plan, and this priority for us to be able to pursue, generally speaking, paving the roads and making improvements to them. We'll head just briefly, we're talking about the secondary six-year plan, that, you know, the county gets a certain amount of money to our system, we get unpaid road fund money, and of course, the unpaid road fund money has to go for unpaid roads. There are other pieces, if you will, of secondary six-year plan money, one being telefees. Telefees are not huge sums of money, but they are not specifically targeted like unpaid road funds are, which have to be spent on gravel roads, bringing them up to a hard surface. In any event, of course, the board sets those priorities with our input, and that was done earlier in the spring. Did also want to mention that along with our plant mix schedule, we do have our surface treatment schedule that has yet to get to King William County. The contractor is able to prosecute work, and the work for us in our surface treatment schedule does include six counties, and we're a little bit at their mercy in how we prosecute that work, but the moral of the story is, we should see the surface treatment contractor in King William in the next few weeks, and you see the roads that will be surface treated, 608 Locust Till, 608 Globe, 625 Custis Mill Pond, 628 Darrell, 635 Chelsea, 6673 Lake Landing, that will be underway in the next few weeks. Construction projects, I'll just make mention of about 600 turn lane addition at 360, of course, that's planned and programmed in to start next spring, and I believe March, and we have some 30 and 360 intersection improvements planned to start about the same time. Our bridge division's been pretty busy, they are a busy bunch, and I believe we've completed the Harriet Creek Bridge replacement on 604, and 609 on Smoky Road, my understanding is in the next couple of weeks, that should conclude as well. Traffic engineering requests, we have had some return, and there'll be some new signage going in on 633 and 673 there at the reservation. Right there were the couple of rail cars used to be in a little museum, that's a pretty tricky location, with some new signage going on there. Our traffic folks, and our traffic folks are in the district, and we send these requests to them, and try to follow up with them, make sure they're taking care of business, get back to us. But we still have under review 628 Darrell Road, we've got a request to review for speed limit posting east of Route 600. 629 Jacks Creek Road, we have a request to review for speed limit reduction there, that's up to our traffic folks. And hopefully this one will turn around pretty quick. We have had a request to bring in the U-turns on 360 westbound, just west of 30, pretty close to the shopping center entrance. I think there's not a turn lane to assist in a U-turn movement there, so if history is any indicator, I should probably hear back on that pretty quick, it shouldn't take a lot of study. Some of the maintenance operation highlights, completed projects, when I glanced over this, and I was able to speak with the superintendent today, King William as well, you can see that we've been pretty busy trying to keep up with potholes, and that's a never-ending situation, and so we've been working 604, 608, 9, 10, and 628, and most of those are north of 360, I believe. Route 608, 627, unpaved roads, so we've had to do blading and maintenance on those. We, it's time of year, so we have been through work order in 1-800-FOR-R-O-D system, been requested do some dust control on 600, 621, and 649, so we've done some of that. Brush cutting, and if you're already, this is done by our maintenance forces in King William, and of course, as y'all probably know, I think they number 12, 12 individuals we have at the headquarters that do most of these things. So we have been able to do some brush cutting on those routes, and try to keep up with unpaved roads, maintenance countywide, and patching potholes. I was asked right before the meeting, we're going to get to and finish up secondary mowing. We are involved in secondary mowing right now as we speak, we're hoping to conclude that in the next two or three weeks. We were called upon to do our own primary road mowing this year, and normally we'd have contractors performing that for us, but because of some issues, we had to self-perform that, and that has gotten us a little bit behind in mowing grass, when normally we would not have to do the primaries, but we hope to be catching up with that as quickly as we We've been busy, and this is really residency-wide, playing some catch-up on the storms we had last year. 600 East River Road, we've got a pipe repaired one on there, it should be complete this week, that was actually a complete replacement of a location that seems periodically want to wash out. 608 Hazelwood Road, pipe replacement will be next on our list, once we complete 600. I heard about Route 30 shoulder repairs, and honestly, I've heard of that before, and I do apologize that we just essentially haven't been able to get to it as yet because of our workload, but my understanding is, within the next few weeks, we should be able to start impacting some of the shoulders on Route 30. And I think with that said, I'd be happy to try to entertain any specific questions that you would have, certainly David's here as well. I think I took a few notes during the public comment period. Mr. Pierceall, and thank you, Mr. Pierceall, for your comments, we do take them apart. And yes, this has been going on a while, and again, on Route 30, we certainly hope to be hitting that pretty hard in the next few weeks, as far as some of the shoulders. Saw myself on the way, several locations that need some work. Yeah, we presented that months ago, that's my understanding.
Yeah. I'm happy to start, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
And, yeah, I know you guys have to go on tour and get beat up, but there's a couple of things, and the shoulders are one. We've talked about it, obviously, but I can tell you the timeline on it, is when they're, when planting season first started, okay? So, you know, when they're trying to get corn in the ground, they were not able to drive their equipment in the legally prescribed way because of the condition of the shoulders of the road. So we're getting to the end of July, we push into August, that corn's going to start getting harvested soon, same, and even bigger equipment's going to be on the road, and their shoulders are in bad, bad shape, so we're creating a really bad situation for guys like Charlie and Jan and all those guys that need to
Equipment.
Protect that equipment. And the same thing with the overhanging trees and everything, and there's been some improvement in some isolated spots, but, you know, from my viewpoint, as I represent my own district, there's a lot that still needs to be done, and I guess, I understand the workload, and I know that every county's got the same thing, but our guys in the farming community are really, are the ones that are getting put at the most risk by those things being left undone, so we need to be mindful of that in the schedule, trying to get that done before, they've got to get that equipment back on the road. The comment about, and the thoughts about the six-year plan with regards to some of these road improvements. Now, the six-year plan, and the way that we've funded that, has been focused, not just primarily, but solely on unpaid roads. That's the entire six-year plan right now. So I guess I want to try to understand, what is the right method for trying to affect some improvement on some of these roads that people are talking about, you know, specifically Upshaw Road, Globe Road, roads that are pretty heavily traveled, because I don't know that the six-year secondary plan is the most appropriate place to get those things, some attention and some funding. Because those funding streams trickle in so very slowly, it would, you know, I don't know that you could fund a single road improvement on any of those roads in the six-year plan in six years.
Be very difficult.
The way that it's funded, right? So is there a more appropriate avenue that we should be looking at? Should we be looking at a smart-scale style project, or some other funding stream that would make more sense to bring some type of improvement to those roads? And, you know, I guess you guys really need to get out there and look at what you think is the most appropriate course of action, but, you know, for any of it, for striping, for, you know, obviously widening would be the most expensive option, but even for some striping, some traffic studies for possible speed limit adjustments or anything like that, I don't know that the six-year plan is where any of that belongs.
You know, I don't believe so, in most cases not. As I indicated, most of your secondary six-year plan money is very targeted money, with the unpaid road money, it's money for unpaid roads. But then you do get a small amount of telefees that can be used for a number of things, but the reality of it is, a six-year, it really buys very little. One of the other options always out there to you, and it's probably not the kind of option that you want to hear, but we do have revenue sharing, a revenue sharing program, where you can apply for revenue sharing. Generally speaking, that requires a match, most of the time about 50/50, but that is a means of tapping the funding stream that does get you a dollar per, your own dollar in pursuit of some of these things. In general, I'd also like to mention, well, you mentioned striping and some of these things, and, you know, we take a look at those. Our main marching orders at the facility residency is where maintenance, and so we are your spokesperson at these types of meetings. Striping generally is restricted with the parameter of road width. Very seldom, if you've got a 16-foot road, a 17-foot road that exists, we can't stripe it because then your lanes become actually too narrow. We're asked many times, let's put some white edge lines on it, to give people a better feel for the heads of the road. You really have the same kind of thing. The roads have to be 18 feet of pavement before you can put white edge lines on them, because of the perception of narrowing the lane width. At the same time, these and other reviews are taking place to some extent. We've had some unfortunate situations on Globe Road, and, you know, due respect to the folks involved there, and the families and what have you, you know, our traffic people review every fatality. I received, Dave and myself, actually received a state police report today, which is furnished to our traffic people, and they will take the state police report, go view the section of the road, and review it from a traffic perspective of what might be able to be done in the future, in an area where a fatality occurs. So some of those things do take place. But one of the other things I did want to mention was, you really have to get to a point of identifying what it is, what road, what section, what do you want to see improved? Do you want, you know, a section of Globe Road widened, or another road widened? One of the things that you have going on right now, I'm sorry, is your long-range transportation plan, for one. I believe that's going on as we speak. I do know that our local land use engineer, Mr. Gagnon, has been meeting with the planning and zoning people, I think it's Dr. Gagnon, and trying to complete the county's long-range transportation plan. Within that plan, that is the county's opportunity to some extent, to get a road on a priority list. Now, your county long-range transportation plan, as Mr. Stutz has been through many of them, you know, it doesn't provide funding, but what it does do is provide a blueprint for the future transportation needs in the county that could be put on the list and can be prioritized such that when funding becomes available, you already have a living document to go by with priorities on it.
With respect to funding, and Joyce and I spoke on the phone, and I want to, correct me if I'm wrong, the things you said, you can ballpark figure a million dollars to widen on one mile of road?
Could be. Personally, that's, might be a little bit high, but we're still talking that kind of money, whether it be, you know, three-quarters of a million, a million dollars. It can be. So many, we, as an agency, have to, and we should, cross every T, dot every I, whatever, and if I'm environmental, stormwater management, every regulation that exists, we abide by it. And the reality is, when you widen a road, you create more impervious area, and when you create more impervious areas, you've got to compensate environmentally for stormwater, whether put a little basin outside of the road, or taking final steps in that regard. And also, in road widening, more often than not, we're talking about a 30-foot prescribed easement that we have to operate a road. And once you put 18-foot pavement in there, and a little tinge of it showing, and a little bit of ditches, you pretty much eat up your 30 feet, so there at times, it can require right-of-way acquisition, and whenever you get into right-of-way acquisition, the numbers really zoom as far as our cost per mile in order to, you know, proceed. Have you gotten the report from the state police dealing with the latest fatality on Globe?
Just got it today.
Today, so you have a review? That was going to be my next question.
Um, David and I looked over, and to be honest, Mr. Chairman, well, just not to comment on it, it's, you know, out of due respect.
Forget the people, for right now, and I understand the respect for the people, no, have you looked at the road? Are there issues with the road?
Um, I have looked at the road, and I've called attention to our traffic people who have already been out to review, and, you know, we're waiting to hear back what their recommendations are.
It's really more what I was interested in.
Okay. And I do expect, Mr. Chairman, me to, I do expect to hear back probably within two weeks on our traffic.
No, I didn't want to get into details and all that. And you noted Ms. Davenport's issue with Upshaw on the tractor trailers.
And you noted Ms. Davenport's issue with Upshaw on the tractor trailers?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Davenport, yeah.
And we can, we'll look into, I've, I've made a comment here.
She's saying that just-
Need to move the signs as visible for trucks and people. Right. We'll, we'll look into that. I did wanna, you mentioned smart scale and Ron mentioned revenue sharing, it takes a fifty-fifty match. Smart scale, you're competing against every other locality in the state and I don't wanna tell you anything you already know.
And, and I was thinking about it earlier today and how we try to fund these types of things. And smart scale didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but it made more sense than the six-year plan because you've got to factor in economic development, factors and all those other things.
Right, when you say six-year plan, the funding you receive through smart scale, that project becomes on the six-year plan. I think you're referring to maybe the telefees or some of those fees that you can use within your six-year plan that accumulate over time, but because it gets a little, it takes a long time to generate enough funds to do something substantial.
Exactly.
But with smart scale, again, you're competing across the state, but you can buy down, you know, there's a, there's a benefit cost score. At the very end of the thing, they look at your project, they score it out and then look at the cost and there's a cost to benefit ratio. So you can buy down the cost with local funds, which improves your score and increases your chances of getting state funding. And that's what other localities have been succeeding. And some localities get, get projects without any local contribution. But it's, it's a competition. So if you're not, if you don't have skin in the game regarding the dollar, it's very difficult.
Who do you have?
A couple of specific areas that folks have brought up to me or that I've noticed. The ditches at four zero three four Dural Road. Ron, there was an email I sent to you and Joyce on April fifteenth. Never got a response to one? Yeah, April fifteenth. What was the date when the Smokey Road, the bridge being replaced? I, it's, I don't really see that on the, on the list here unless I'm overlooking it and I didn't hear any-
Well, no, you're not overlooking it because there was some form of typo in there. I had to scribble around and figure it out myself. Six oh nine is, is the Smokey Road job. And the bridge folks tell me, we're talking the next couple of weeks. Six oh four was Harriet Creek Bridge Replacement, which was completed just shortly ago. I did notice something, and I apologize for that, I did notice quite a few typos in the monthly report.
This is six oh nine completed.
It's actually six oh four, up Harriet Creek was completed. Smokey Road being next, six oh nine.
Do we have any estimation on when Smokey Road, the, the bridge will be open?
Um, what I understand is, well, you know, I, I bet a heads on that because I don't have a clear understanding on when that will be open. So I'll just get back to you on it.
Okay. Also Mahixon Road, there's been some concern about the vehicle traffic speed there as well as the increased frequency of trucks on that road. So I don't know if we have done anything recently with respect to a traffic study. But that's, that's one that some folks down in that area are raising some concerns about, Mahixon Road.
And their concerns are speed and traffic or?
Yes, the speed of vehicle traffic as well as the increased frequency of tandem, you know, type vehicles and tractor trailers and such.
Okay.
And then the last thing, Etten Mills, just east of Nelson's Bridge Road. They're starting out in the bottom. It's almost like there's a spring there, right kind of in the middle of the road. There's always a wet spot and the asphalt's kind of busted out in the center of the road. So this is Etten Mills Road just east of Nelson's Bridge Road.
Oh, you're making your list.
I will double check at April eighteenth.
Yeah, it's April fifteenth, it goes to you and Joyce.
While you're adding to your list, have you got, or is there a plan for replacing the pavers in the town of Westwood?
Yes.
I thought you had mentioned it, you don't know exactly when or approximately.
Um, we're trying to get that going within the next thirty days. Our concrete brick contractor, I think is gonna, I think the last I heard was actually out of the country for some surgery, as he's the lead guy, he is the man for this crew. And I think he's supposed to be back in like two weeks. And we're right now shopping for brick in order to do the work.
Could've paved it. Pardon, could've just paved it.
If you, if you wanna general in terms of Mahixon, fourteen sixty-eight in that area? In that area, because Mahixon's along the road, that's where they-
Okay.
I've got a trap over this. Darned bricks every day.
They had, you know, I thought they, it not lasted very long, but it, they came down in a while.
No, when you think about it, they have and the kind of traffic.
Oh my God, yes.
And I was actually, you know, fairly amazed. We're not real fans of the brick pavers. They look pretty, they can't be meaningless nightmares. But the reality of it is, is they seem to have taken the world's-
They don't last as long as any pavement I've seen. With the traffic becomes frozen.
And like you said, some of the constituents out there mentioning these residents, I noticed Globe Road is one of the ones coming up for the resurfacing. When you do the resurfacing, she was saying there's a lot of brush. Do you clear the brush at the same time or do you just do the repaving? Or do they kind of try to clean it out?
You know, we try for the, the bottom line is the, the surface treatment, the repaving is done by contractor.
Oh, and the other thing is done by somebody else.
So it's, that's what they do. And we do try, and I say try. We do try to review those roads and if there's something we can take out pretty quick before they get in, we do try to do it, but it's, yeah.
And then, well, then I wanted to mention, the citizens can call us one eight hundred F O R R O A D. And they, like I said, the more planes go out there, the more likely it could be fixed. So if everybody's having trouble with lots of brush or Charlie, I mean, I know he's, he's told me several times. But maybe if other people call and say there are areas where the overrun bushes or trees up or hanging the roads, it helps to call so that otherwise you don't know.
That's right. They, they get logged in and you know, they're really more effective than y'all telling us at V's.
Right, that's all I'm thinking.
I got no call.
They come to our meeting.
I got no call over place.
Call V-dots.
Yeah. Call that one eight hundred four.
Cause they do get logged, I work there, so. Anyway, and the last thing I wanted to mention was that U-turn review, so we've mentioned that since January two. And I just wanted to mention, as I told Joyce, there is a designated turn lane less than five hundred feet from there where you can turn left safely, that wouldn't call, and it's only a problem during rush hours. And, but that's when the problems occur, and accidents, many accidents have happened because people get upset with having to wait for that light, they speed through or make a right turn and get into the left lane where you can't go, you could block traffic and stops traffic on Thursdays. I just wanted to mention, what takes so long to do the review? Who does the review? What kind of things do they look at? Like I said, cause there is a designated left turn lane less than five hundred feet down the road.
You know, I, I can't really speak to January or-
I mean, I would know how they worry about that as, it seems to be taken-
Joyce asked me to have our traffic folks review it. A couple of these stuff, these are the stuff.
Right. I mean-
And you know, I've not done that. Generally speaking, I do handle, as a specific duty, traffic engineering requests for the residency, to the traffic folks. And they do have fourteen counties and there's still whatever, but they're usually pretty good. Most of the time it'll take about thirty days for them to, to work a lot of the requests through. And they do, in the case of fatalities and many other things, they do field visit and you know, for speed studies they're gonna run, they'll run their own little form of radar to get an eighty-fifth percentile of speed and those kind of things compared to crash data. Very technical, as it probably should be. Hope to hear back, never forget.
Right, and I wanted to thank you, like I said, Route six thirty-two was under times. That was great, I know we pushed for under time, under budget, I don't know if it was under budget or not, but I know it was under times, they said it was gonna be closed till August, so it's okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Chairman?
Anyone else? All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much, y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, me too.
Get some remedy. Got the shovel, so.
There you go.
Sometimes it takes that.
It does.
All right, and you said we have no reason to take on that part. We'll call you in a minute. All right, our next item is nine eighty, old business public hearing and consideration of ordinance zero six one nine Atlantic Broadband and franchise agreement. And I guess at this point, the public hearing, anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the public hearing in the element, ordinance zero six dash one nine.
Hello, I'm Brian. I want to speak in support of it and also say that I really felt like this was moving along prior to this point and that the delays somehow seemed to just be not real, I'm not real clear on why that there are the delays. I understood there were some legalities for Mr. Stuck to review. However, I don't feel like that this was reinventing the wheel and I think that this should have been moving along in a more timely fashion. Kingwood County, other residents of Kingwood County, other than the school and the county administrations who have allowed the high-speed internet access. The rest of the county is desperately waiting for, for other resources to come our way in regards to better internet service too. I don't need to again say that my daughter, who grew up in Kingwood County all of her life, completed high school and college out of mechanics while I was there. And so in order that this just move along in a more expedient manner, I suggest that the resolution for the Atlantic Broadband initiative to move forward.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone, I close this public hearing. Do I have the team counter?
Mr. Chairman, I am greatly pleased to move in favor of ordinance zero six dash nineteen.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a point on this. Ms. Broad has said that she thinks that there's a setback, that they have not slowed down at all. Atlantic Broadband has been moving forward full speed, they just haven't slowed them down at all. And besides, this is, this contract is only for cable. It has nothing to do with internet coming through them, but the hope that they're going to do that too.
That's, that's what I think mostly happened. It's almost crazy to think of it hard.
And I noticed it does come all the way from, from N A O. They've got the loops and all the things coming all both ways. They're really moving right along, they've gotten all the way into the, what you call the town of Baylet. They've come, they've got all the transformer boxes and all the new cables running. So we're looking forward to all that coming back.
Any further? Louie?
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
No.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Next item is ten eighty, new business, new training requirement for local elected officials to lead schools. Deputy clerk to the board.
Good evening, this is New. As you can see in your packets, we have a new code from the Ethics Council passed down. All elected officials will now be required to take this new training. As far as I can tell, what you'll need to do before December thirty-first, as you are currently in your seats elected, you will just need to log in with your name and current email addresses. And it is just a fifty-five minute video online that you'll watch and they will track that on their end and you can just let me know when you've done that and I'll track it on my end. And you all need to do it for another two years. All new elected officials will have two months to complete the training once they're elected. You are able to do an in-person train if you would like. I don't have any information on that yet, they have not completed it, but they are and they're creating it for anyone that wishes to do something of that nature. But it seems pretty simple and straightforward. It was only about fifty-five minutes online and, but I didn't complete it, but I can if you'd like me to.
Thank you. Next item is new business, ten B public hearing, consideration of ordinance seven dash one nine, request to rezone the tax map, parcel two eighty dash forty-nine, Ryan, you're the director of engineering.
The applicant in Port's Properties LLC is requesting that the property identified as tax map parcel twenty-eight dash forty-nine consisting of approximately pointing six acres, be rezoned from R one, which is a suburban residential to B two, general business. The property is located at five twenty-seven Sharon Road. A little description of the property is currently a single-family structure located, used to be residential, obviously, it's been rezoned to be, pardon, it's still residential, used to be to. The applicant wishes to rezone the property for business. The demographic and physical features, the property is currently being used as a single-family resident. The property front Sharon Drive also fronts the original Capahan Highway and will meet the requirements for the transportation portal in the district. The surrounding properties in zoning, southern states is adjacent to the left of the property and like the left to the right, it is cleared. There is a property across Sharon Road which has a single-family dwelling located on it. And there are two parcels that are undeveloped. There's a list of the tax, tax map parcel numbers in your packet. The property is accessible to public water and sewer. There is adequate capacity for current and any proposed water uses with the B two zoning classification. Fire protection, emergency medical service would, would be provided by the Kingwood Fire Department. The changes zoning will not result in any additional schoolchildren and any subsequent use or redevelopment property is consistent with all of the B two zoning requirements in the ordinance. Access to the property, transportation, the existing entrance to the site from Sharon Road is unpaid entrance. Any change of use relative to the existing used site would require review and approval by the region department of transportation. There is currently no entrance from the original Capahan Highway. Typically, V dot wood and amen will require commercial entrance, and depending on projected traffic generation, may require a turn lane, which is not likely, but it is possible. No traffic study has been requested nor submitted with the application, and traffic study and all recommended roadway improvements would be the responsibility of the applicant or future owners, and such improvement will be based on the uses and development proposed at such future time. Our review of the future land use map shows this property being designated commercial and surrounded by high-density and moderate residential. The comp plan, proposed use, the two thousand sixteen Conference of Plan includes business in this area, and it is located in the commercial designation for, for the land use plan map. Current grid access, a right-of-way dedication would be addressed at the time of preparation, review, and approval of traffic impact analysis. The public hearing was held for the planning commission. At the planning commission, there were rezoned case ZO three nineteen, this case here was presented to the planning commission, the public hearing was held, pretty much the packet you're seeing there is what they were saying. The planning commission questioned the applicant's number of things, including their proposed use of the property, what they want to do with it, the property is, the interest is for Kingwood Forest, they want to move their operation to this facility here from where they are now, around three sixty. We held some discussions about the adequate parking, access to the property in general, everything's going to come in off Sharon Road, they're really aren't anticipating bringing anything in L three sixty, it's really steep going up in that way, pretty expensive for them to pleasantly drop away. So, after discussions and talking to the applicants, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of this rezoning. And I believe the applicants are here, if you have any questions with them, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The next item is, I will open the public hearing for consideration of ordinance zero seven, request to rezonate tax map parcel twenty-eight, data four nine. Anyone that would like to speak, please come forward. Don't tease. Seeing what no one coming forward, I close that public hearing. Any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, was, was there any resident, any adjacent property owners that were, had any interest, or anybody was contacted of, because again, the section six on the application doesn't indicate anything, I think you clarified to me that.
There were no comments from the adjacent property owners, no one expressed concerns about the use of the property or proposed use of the property.
And what is the, the transportation corridor overlay plan, what potential cost impacts does the owner, is looking at it or not?
As it stands, none. My concern, as far as TCO and things like that, is, one is, once it is zoned commercial, then it falls under that corridor overlay district, that, because, if you look at where this house sits, it's actually already screened from three sixty.
Right.
It doesn't have T one eleven siding, it doesn't have shiny metal siding, and it's not plywood siding, so it already meets those criteria. If they were to tear that building down and build a new one, I'd just like to point out that it would fall under the corridor overlay district.
So, are they going to have to put sidewalk improvements and things in?
No, remember, Bob, we rolled that way back.
I just wanted to refresh my memory, thank you.
I don't anticipate any improvements to meet the corridor overlay district.
Alright, thank you.
You want to?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'm going to do a report, and so seven, second.
I'll leave you.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bruegler?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Next item I have is Board Supervisor's comments.
Yes, I do, sir.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I have been made aware through some email communication that there are any concerns about safety at our caring park, and some of the apartments that are adjacent, so I have asked Sheriff Walton if he would come up and speak for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, as you have, I have also been made aware of some issues that may be occurring at the ballpark during times of games. We were made aware of some disorderly or inappropriate behavior taking place, usually down by the basketball courts down at that general area. So, and it's not uncommon, we have had to deal with that over the years, it crops up every now and then, and we address that, and we're going to do that again, we're going to increase our patrols, and try to increase visibility. Obviously, we can't be in the park all the time, so we encourage folks to dial nine-one-one when they see this type of activity occurring, so we can dispatch a deputy there. Notifying us on social media is not the quickest way to get us there, we don't monitor that all the time, but dialing nine-one-one will certainly get someone to respond. I am meeting this week with some residents from the apartment complex next door, and I will address some of these concerns with them also.
Sheriff, I was past there just past weekend, didn't we, when we initially approved this, this construction, didn't we say that there had to be a fence put in place? I see the two gates for the, you know, the driveways are more or less there, but when, is there supposed to be a fence separating that property from the park area?
Oh, Mr. Hanson, that was mine, I understand also there was a barrier, but I don't know what type of barrier that wasn't, I don't, I don't know what happened with that, when it went through the process, I don't know.
Because when I just went there, again, it seems some of that, what is that, that orange barrier, whatever that stuff is, but that's just, it's not a fence, so, is there any idea from the property owner, from the management team, are they ever going to put a fence up? If, to me, that would seem to be a important thing, of course, they're going to cut through the fence, but to see half the fence there would be, because there's no fence along the whole stretch of road or the whole property line.
Unfortunately, yes, you're the wrong person, because I really don't know the answer to that, that's.
And you know? I'm going to double check in the morning, but there was, does not appear that, anywhere outside the plans, that there was any expectation that a permanent fence was going to be in there. They, they put in landscaping buffer and that sort of thing, but.
I don't know if fences would.
I don't remember seeing anything.
Well, I, I don't know, that's the question, that's the whole, the whole of the thing. All we can do right now is, is what the sheriff is proposing to do, and I think the important thing to take note of is that if somebody observes something going on in the park that is dangerous or is disorderly, to contact, dispatch by nine-one-one immediately.
That is correct. But aren't you looking for a recommendation, too, as how we can prevent this type of a thing? Take, when you get a chance, I know you're, you're a long way from there, take a drive over there and see the exposure that those kids and people in the park have to the folks crossing over that property line into there.
I've, I've been contacting directly with some of the people that were reporting this issue, and, and even they say that this isn't so much a problem at the departments, it's a problem that's occurred for years and years and years, and years and years and years, and that when it happens, you know, we've just got to increase our presence there, and they need to be vigilant, and they need to let the sheriff know what's going on.
Thank you, obviously, we're speaking at two different views, but I appreciate your comment.
Well, I was going to echo what Mr. Miskowski said also, that it's not necessarily the folks coming from the apartment complex next door, we have had residents as far as Essex come there and.
Yeah, it's true.
With us, so, so it's been on one front for a number of years, it's nothing new, it just needs to be readdressed, and we're going to do our best to take care of it. Now, I've talked to Ms. Fox, with the Parks Record, she's aware of it, and we're working together on this.
Yes, I think that's what, I believe that's one of the issues that Travis was commenting on, and I fully agree with you, and I think that's a good point, too.
Yes. This, this problem has been going on. I waited for what they needed to do. Yes. Excuse the.
Thanks, Chairman.
Alright, next item I have is Board Supervisor's comments, Mr. Miskowski.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, it's good crap, it's good to see a full order, especially in the middle of the summer, when so many people are on vacation. You know, you can see we've had an opportunity to try to address some of these concerns that people have about transportation issues and VDOT issues, and, you know, we do, when we get complaints brought to us, we take them straight to VDOT, and, you know, they aren't busy, but squeaky wheels do make a difference with them, so utilize that reporting program, continue to bring your concerns to us, but when you do, also report it directly to them as well, the more visibility we can get for the issues that are going on, especially the maintenance issues, the potholes, the washed-out shoulders, the tree trimming, things like that. You know, the, the long-term solutions to some of these transportation problems are going to be difficult decisions to make, that we're going to have to find the right way to go about solving them, you heard tonight, you know, basically what limited help VDOT is, is, has on the table for us. So, you know, we're, we're going to have to continue to research what our options are on our end, and continue to advocate with VDOT, to make, to make these needed improvements that we, that we do need. You know, and the good news side is on, on, on transportation, we do have some projects that are becoming, that I think will improve things, we've got the thirty and three sixty project that will be started sometime next year, when that's done, that's going to greatly improve traffic flow through that intersection, and really help unmodel what can be kind of a mess in the avenues up there. I'm very, very happy that we have approved the franchise agreement with Atlantic Broadband. When we started the quick committee, almost three years ago now, we held a public meeting, we talked about at the time of what we thought was probably going to be our best and probably only option, which was to put an awful lot of public dollars on the line to make this happen, millions of dollars, years of construction to try to raise the money, bonds, all kinds of things, that really none of us thought were that appealing, but probably the only way we thought to get it done. The, the fine folks on the quick committee have put in a lot of hours, a lot of miles, a lot of phone calls to try to bring partners to the table, the folks at the schools found a really nice creative solution to get Segra down here, and just by going to every meeting we could go to, and getting on every phone call we could get on, and going to the General Assembly, and meeting with Evan Feyman, and meeting with the governor's people, we were able to, to put out a convincing enough case to, to have Atlantic Broadband make the investment that they're making with private dollars. So here we are, three years later, our initial plan, we were talking seven to ten years, ten to twenty million dollars in county money, we've spent less than a hundred thou, well, less than a hundred thousand to get the Segra line run, and what the, what the schools had to match, and then this Atlantic Broadband is all private money. It's a great accomplishment, and I'm very proud of the folks that made it happen, and I'm excited for the people that are going to, in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, have good, affordable, modern internet service. I won't be one of them, but I'll be very happy, and we'll continue to work on a solution for the whole county, but where we are now is, is a great achievement, and I'm very happy.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, thanks, this is a really large crowd, I thought maybe we had a big issue like a motocross or raccoon, or, wow, just a normal. Thanks for coming, I echo everything that Mr. Miskowski says, and like I said, it is up to us all, do come to us and bring us this information, but like the guy from VDOT said, call the one eight-hundred number F O R R O A D, the more complaints they get, the more likely they are to do something about, so everybody calls, that's not just ours, they don't take our calls, like Mr. Earhart said, it was something from April that still hasn't answered, so if they let a lot of different people call, and leave the same complaint, then stuff gets done, so I just wanted to mention that, like Mr. Miskowski said, the dollars are bad, and I was hoping maybe, maybe we can look at a future board meeting, to maybe use some county money, and maybe capital or something, I think we can look in, like I said, the more money we put into it, the better it looks for VDOT.
They're looking at you weird.
That's alright, if they want, it takes money to do stuff, I'm sorry.
I'll come in on that in a minute.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Mr. Hanson, alright. There.
Appreciate everybody coming out to see the, you know, sentiment echoed from my, my counterparts ahead of me. Allison is on vacation, I want to put a plug in for County Fest, which is coming up in August, I don't know the specifics yet on it, August seventeenth is the date, I was trying to get some, some information, but she's on vacation. I think we're going to have a dunking booth there, and I don't know for sure, the Little Link typically has a dunking booth, they're not getting one this year, so I'm trying to encourage a dunk the supervisors volunteer aspect, I think I'm going to raise the most money, because Mr. Hanson probably can't get in it, but.
Oh, that's.
In the past, you know, in the past, I've chatted to Allison for always scheduling County Fest the week of my vacation, but I think I'm going to call her a thinker tomorrow.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alright, folks, thanks y'all for coming out, and I don't, I don't think it delayed Atlantic Broadband as much, I think it continued on with the payment lines and everything, even though we had to do an ordinance, it's where they hold down there, and we, I don't think we have a plan of stopping it at any point. Again, I'd like to thank y'all for coming, and be safe out there, it's like we're going to get some relief tomorrow from this heat, because I've been trying to move it, and I'm still in District One. But, and that's all I really have. Gentlemen, unless y'all have a problem, I assume I can use the points, I guess.
Yeah, I was fine with that, the only thing I was looking for was, was there an application for the REC Commission that was supposed to be in our place, or is that?
And so, and two, you put them for EDA and Parks Record.
Yeah, 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 I was trying to recall the emails that went earlier, which one we're waiting for.
I'll leave you, did everybody get the recommendation you didn't get? Alright, we'll start going through these ones. Item fourteen, appointments, eight, consideration of Resolution nineteen, page forty-six, appointment, real appointment, Kingwood County, speaking of which, well, authority for a four-year term.
I can run through these real quick, if you just want to run through them, I can run through these, or if you just want to run through them.
Run through them.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll be with approval of Resolution nineteen forty-six, appoint Travis Longus to the EDA for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Sir?
Was there other people?
No, I was just going to read them off as we go, I wasn't necessarily saying we'd do it omnibus, but.
Alright, I will second Travis's recommendation.
Okay.
So, are there, is there, is there someone else that is in competition with him for this position, which I've tracked him out, are there other applicants?
There are other applicants in, in other positions.
Do you want this, very quickly? There are eight applicants total, there are four recommendations, those four recommendations were laid out for the board, from the EDA, on our recommendation as to who should be appointed, awful luck for us, and which slot that they would fill, this is filling our two vacancies, which would be Travis Longus's position, and then we had Mr. Jenkins's position that was left vacant because he decided not to reapply. The other two were additionals that were added in, and those are from our resolution to the state that we expand to nine individuals on the EDA. So you have four total applicants, and the four that I think are in front of you are our recommendations from the EDA.
Okay, I think you all have it, the, the recommendation from the EDA Resolution nineteen dash forty-seven.
That's for Travis specifically, yes.
For the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Kenneth Holder, is that how you pronounce that?
Holder.
Resolution nineteen dash forty-eight, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Roger Harmon. Resolution nineteen dash fifty, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, William Lee.
Resolution 19-50, term ending June 30th, 2021, William Lee.
So you do want to do it omnibus? Sure, that's fine.
Where is this in the agenda?
On the extra piece of paper they handed out today.
You tell them that the recommendation is.
What did you just read from, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's the recommendation. You just add your points, and now there is.
It was, it was in with your amended agenda. Thank you for that.
Under the main, Senator, would you recommend it to actuate, correct, Mr. Hodges?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification.
How many, how many meetings has Mr. Longus missed? I know he missed the last one.
Actually, it was President's last one.
So we have it in the minutes that he was asking?
I don't think he was at our last joint meeting. He was at the last EDA.
The last joint, sorry.
Okay, at the joint meetings, it, we would have to clarify because a joint meeting is not considered a regular session. So if I look at the actual attendance, then according to the bylaws, I need to look at the regular meetings and take attendance from there. So working meetings and joint sessions are normally do not align with my regular session. So to answer your question completely, Mr. Earhart, I'd have to go back and look to answer it as far as the regular sessions.
Okay.
We have a motion, second on 46. Any further discussion?
I'd like to know why, why we decided not to give the other four.
At the same time?
At the same time? Well, what's the basis if we have to do them all? I'd like to know why we just picked the first four.
Why these four were picked and the other four weren't?
Since we're not discussing this so much in the back.
That's if you, yeah, you recommend.
Hold on.
I was asking a question.
If we're going to have that discussion, then we'll need to withdraw the motion. We'll need to make a closed session motion, then we'll need to go in there, because that's the only appropriate place to discuss personnel matters. Okay? So is that what you want to do? Not me.
Not myself. I have to see.
That I'm just asking.
I look at the strength of Mr. Hodges and say, I am satisfied.
What's that? Sounds like three.
Sounds like three to two, either way.
All right, well, let's, let's call it that. Let's see how it goes.
All right, back to resolution 18-46.
Mr. Greenwood?
Mr. Warren?
We do one of ten.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will move approval of resolution 1947, appointing Kenneth Holdrick to a term on the EDA ending June 30th, 2023.
Sir.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will move approval of resolution 1948, appointing Roger Harmon to a term on the EDA ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Mr. Earhart?
I'm looking for his application in my package, sorry. Give me a second.
He's from West Point. He served on the West Point EDA for government term. He restored Montez.
I was, I'm sorry?
He restored Montez.
I was, I'm going to abstain. I don't know, I don't know, they don't talk to me that much about him.
Go ahead, Olivia.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will move approval of resolution 1950, appointing William Lee to a term on the EDA ending June 30th, 2021.
Sir. Supposed to be 1949. 1950 looks like Recreation on.
Ah, is that, is that the case? I was reading off the volume sheet. Very good. 1949, then.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes. Yes, 1950 is the record.
Yeah, dude. All right. Consideration of resolution 19-50, appointment, rear appointment to King Wing County Recreation Commission for a four-year term expiring on June 30th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of resolution 1950, appointing Charles Faulkner, William Faulkner, to a term on the recreation, expired June 30th, 2022.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will offer with respect to discussion from the Parks and Recreation Commission that Faulkner and Hicks were discussed. The recommendation was for Faulkner, the third application was not presented to Parks and Recreation, wasn't included in our list of people. So there are three candidates. Only two of the three were presented to Parks and Recreation. Obviously, we, you know, we have control, so to speak, over what the Recreation Commission may have recommended, but the third person in here was, was down for EDA and Parks and Recreation, but it wasn't provided to Parks and Recreation group as a whole. Mr. Faulkner was recommended by Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Any further? Olivia?
Mr. Greenwood?
He was on there previously, and he chose not to apply for board, and now the position's come up, he's applying again.
I'm, I'm just confused. All the numbers on the agenda and the numbers of these pages don't match anything, so I'm just, I'm thinking 47, 48, 49, 50, but really here, this one is 50.
Look at, look at your.
Some of these are legal problems.
On your agenda, look at your agenda.
Yeah, that's correct. It says 47, 48, 49, 50, and 51, but these are named 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50.
Yeah, because item A is on the, item A is on the previous page, Mr. Greenwood in 14, so you get 46 on page one, 47, 48, 49, page two. We're, we are in the correct order. I'm sorry, I just spoke off of the sheet, and I'm sure Olivia apologizes as well.
So all these. We have a motion in second.
No, 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 no.
Yes, Olivia's called.
50 was Parks and Recreation.
It's not what Olivia's saying. It is on the agenda.
Yeah, okay. Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Consideration of resolution 19-44, appointment, rear appointment to Mill Penesson, Planning District Commission for a one-year expiring on June 30th.
Then under approval of resolution 1951, appointing Eugene Rova to the Planning District Commission for a term, a one-year term expiring June 30th.
Second.
In discussion, please.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
I have one.
I think most of our.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Read it in German.
No, I can leave it for the night.